Karen Yerwe will be joining us at 5:30. She's running a little late. And the first order of business is to look around, see if there's any public here, and there is not, so we can dispense with public comment for this. And we have a sad event that's happened with one of our colleagues, and Dr. Brown has asked to say a few words about that.
Yes, this will be the first time I've been in this meeting without Paul Alexander. So we will talk about Paul again on Tuesday, but I think it's important for us to note and to appreciate and to recognize his contributions to this community. Paul was the longest-serving, had the longest-serving school district employee. We recognize him at a convocation for his 45th year of service to the organization. And I try my best at that time to capture the beauty of Paul and all that he knows. Like Paul knows everything. He knows every square inch of this school district. He's the district historian. I know Professor Bradwell, you spent a lot of time with him as he unpacked the history of our school district. But most importantly, Paul was a good person and man and father and a community member. And a good Yankee fan, too. I've been to a Yankees baseball game with Paul. And watching him watch baseball was a treat and a joy. And the ways in which he interacted with my own kids on that day taught me how much of a great person and father and loving person he is. So Paul Alexander represents the best of our school district, and to lose him tragically was something that has impacted us all. But we can celebrate the person he has been, and his legacy will live in all of us. So thank you all for that.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Tricia will all be thinking about him a lot this weekend.
Yeah.
Committee response? We didn't have approval of minutes. Sean, do you have any quick comments on the minutes from September 20th? You have a chance to look at those?
No, and I know we'll have time again. I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Brown said. It's been a tough, that was a tough semester this weekend.
Yeah.
And I'm thankful for Paul and all that he's done. So the minutes look good.
So the minutes look very straightforward to me. Does anyone else have any sort of comment or thought on them? It did jog my thinking about GIAC, so we'll have an update on whether we've gotten any official word from anyone. Tricia tells me we're waiting for something from the attorney.
And I put in my notes to make sure I follow up.
Good. Great. All right. Well, in that case, I guess we can't vote on the minutes till Karen gets here, am I right?
We have a form.
We do. All right then, let's vote on the minutes. I, motion for approval, Sean?
Second.
Second. All in favor? And Heather, ICSD facilities update, please.
Thanks. Why don't you go up and join us? I will be there. Actually, is it, is our, right here?
Any of these are dying out. What's our role?
Um, I shared a slide, but it's basically like this is just, it's snapshots of our work. If you could scoot up, I apologize to the third slide, and that would put us up to October, I think. There we go. So again, just to reiterate that the goal really is for a partnership, that we want to make sure that we're experiencing a culture shift for facilities and really looking at things through the experience of a child and how our work can contribute, God bless you, to that experience. So for this particular slide, I again brought a few pictures that of themselves. They don't have the whole story, but we'll start with the red triangle. That is a screen shot taken of a computer. It's a program that we run on laptops, and it tells us the temperature of every space in the district, every room, every everywhere. And we have two people that start at 6:00 AM, and they run a scan of every single space in the district, and they're looking for outlier temperatures. And when they find an outlier, they see if they can correct it via the computer. And if they can't, they let me know so that I can let the building principal know so that if there's going to be an impact on teaching and learning, either too hot or too cold, or in some way uncomfortable or distracting, we let them know that we're trying to get ahead of it and that we're trying to maintain a comfortable learning environment. This is a culture shift toward being more proactive and really understanding that the care and keeping of each learning environment is up to us and taking some ownership of that. So Brian and Larry actually hop on their computers and text me usually somewhere between 5:00 and 7:00 if there are any issues, or they'll just text and say everything's okay. It allows us to, you know, if it can't be corrected with a computer, they can go directly there and troubleshoot and remediate the situation. And since doing this, we've seen a real downward turn in uncomfortable teachers and uncomfortable students. So just getting ahead of it. The next, right below it, the blue circle, the X through it, is a pair of really ugly sheds. They sit out, you can just admire the ugliness, right? Dan knows them. They're out behind Bell Sherman. But what's significant about this again is the partnership and the understanding that facilities supports teaching and learning. And in this particular one, these ugly sheds were scheduled to be repurposed and replaced. And Tim Meyerhoff, who is the lead custodian in that building, said, hey, let's put a hold on that because there's a capital project coming up, and all of that space out back is going to change. And there's no point in doing this now. And his response is, we can make do and wait. And for me, that was a big shift in terms of looking ahead to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts and that we are managing our spaces intelligently. So it was a, it was a nice partnership, and he and Jeff Tomasic worked together to make a different storage plan for the things that are in those places until their project is complete. Over to the right, the little purple smiley face, that is a fascinating photo of the temperature alarms at the high school. Those are on all the coolers as facilities works with food service to support universal lunch. Not just at the high school, in all the buildings, we want to support healthy, safe food. But the partnership is represented. Those alarms ping my phone usually about 4:40 in the morning, and they give me a temperature alert. And if there's anything outside of the bounds, then I can contact Beth and her staff and way before school starts, we can make sure that everything's kind of safe there. So we get again a head start. The bottom left, little Pac-Man guy, is an up-close snapshot of the bleachers that were installed at DeWitt in 2019. And the reason it's so up-close is they weren't functioning very well at all. And that was impacting teaching and learning, and it was impacting athletics. And when we showed up to troubleshoot the issue, what we found really is that they were functional, but they had to be done in a sequence. So my staff showed up, checked everything, troubled, you know, the whole troubleshooting, and then went through, met with custodial staff and phys ed staff to make sure everybody knew how to properly use them because one end was kind of stuck. They were swinging out like a clamshell. They were basically not usable. So we wanted to make sure that we were supporting the phys ed program in that middle school. And then the last little guy is, that's Bliss Gym, and we were having some temperature control issues, which is sometimes the bane of existence in the high school as we have competing systems with Day and Johnson and projects. And we got a reach out from Stephanie Valetta, who is advocating for her volleyball athletes and program. And the gym was about 64 degrees, which is uncomfortable to compete in. And Brian again came in and saved the day, thought of a workaround. Right now, what you'd have to do to control the temperature is get a ladder, go up to the ceiling with a wrench and adjust the temperature by hand, by valve each day. And he kind of built a workaround and then taught Stephanie how to help manage that. So it's a nice collaboration between athletics and also again, really looking to partner with teaching and learning environments. And the last one, there's no picture of, and I know that these aren't very exciting pictures, but this next story is even less exciting. It would have been a picture of the well cap at Caroline. So Carl Slack and Dan Matthews noted that there'd been some wear and tear on the well pump. It's one of the last submerged well pumps. It's way, 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 way down the ground. And they realized that it, when it failed, it was likely to fail in about five months, which would have put us in the middle of winter. When it failed, it would have been upsetting, would have interrupted basically everything about a school, not to have running water. And so on scheduled days off from school and on weekends, they got an electrician, an excavator, and a well company, and it took almost four weeks to do. They got it all replaced, so everything is brand new, put back together. And when he called me, Carl called me on the phone and said, yeah, that pump was over 30 years old. I'm glad we got it out now. But what they did is they also took a Sharpie and they labeled everything, and then they went in the fuse box and they put dates. And they said that this will keep us on track for maintaining long after we're retired, so this will never interrupt us again. And for me, that just showed that like the culture is changing to forward-thinking and supporting our buildings. So that's it. That's all. Storytime is now concluded.
I just want to say that pump and I started at the same time at Caroline. I'm still here and the pump is not.
So you've outlasted the well pump.
That's right.
Well done.
Heather, I continue to appreciate the approach to making sure we understand the facilities and the connection to teaching and learning. So again, thank you for that. We did have a question amongst our students. One, they were very pleased with the answer about the tennis courts. At least I think it made sense to them, and I hope I captured what you said appropriately. I'm sure I did not, but thank you for that. And most recently, the question was about the bathrooms at the high school. And so just wanted to pose that, see if there's any updated information.
For the GNH bathrooms?
I believe those are the bathrooms they were talking about.
There are an update in a way, in that we're partnering with building leadership. What has surfaced is that sometime before 9:00, there's some vandalism that's occurring. And it's occurring pretty regularly, so we put about $500 worth of nuisance and faucets in since school started. So we're working actually with Jason and Martha and that crew to see what we can do about supervision, what we can do about some permanent fixes to keep the spaces safe and looking good, and what are some different things on our end that we can do to make the space, make sure that it's welcoming. So it's a combination of, it's in a state of disrepair, so we're making new what we can make new. But some of the things that have been made new are, they're literally ripping off the wall. So just water, this water's coming out pretty straight. So I think that there's a natural inclination that there's a default mindset that if a student breaks something, we'll just lock the door. And that's not really the solution. Like, we're really trying to partner and see like, what is it that's causing this type of action in a student? What can we do differently, and how can we be supportive? And also, how can we make sure that the bathrooms are usable and nice for the rest of everybody else?
And I would just say, keep in mind with your repairs, starting in February break, we're taking them over in the capital project to renovate them too. So just want to make sure again that the district's not duplicating efforts in those spaces, but keeping them functioning for the next few months.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, that's helpful for me. Not sure what we'll share, but I'll leave that for you, Dr. Brown, to respond. I guess couldn't respond to their questions about these spaces.
Did you have anything in particular, or you're just here?
I'm just here, but I can also give you an update as the agenda requires.
Okay. Just checking. We have Cindy, let's see, no. Cindy's coming up. We have Dan talking to us about e-buses.
Liz is gonna take the lead on this. She's been doing a great job on this project.
Tricia, did you get the quick slide guy? Just brief, it's the new stuff we've been working on. EPA Clean Federal Grant Program, this is the one that's been heavily advertised and that people have been seeing in the news. They had the EPA Clean Program before, and it's been revamped this last spring. So there's been more money added to this, and it covers both bus and infrastructure now. So we did apply for this before the 19th deadline, and we will hear by the end of the month if and how much we've been awarded. So that will help us with like a, create our plan going forward of how many buses that we will get. The VW voucher application, that's through the manufacturer. That application will be finalized this Friday, and that's for our two pilot buses that we plan on going to the voters within May. And this is up to $220 per bus, so that will bring the price of the down very close to a regular priced bus.
Twenty thousand, that question?
Sorry, $220,000. Sorry. I saw Amanda's face and I was like, oh.
I know we want to have more money.
Cool, we do better than that.
That's good. I mean, you, it's really like, it's even better now.
With the VW voucher application, it also qualifies us for the Joint Utilities of New York, and that covers up to 90% of the upgrade in our utility and the infrastructure for the charging for those two buses. So I think we have like a definite plan that we're gonna definitely pilot these two buses and go to the voters in May, and then hopefully it will be delivered next year, like November-ish. So that is the plan for at least our pilot. The New York State Make Ready Program, we are currently in active meetings to develop this plan a little bit more. And we've been connected with Barry Carr, who's like leading this program for the state. And we can put multiple chargers at different schools, and it will be covered up to 90% as well for public staff and students. We're not sure how much the buses can use them because really part of the qualification is it has to be open to the public for a certain amount of time. And so that's why if we use them for public staff or students, we could do this. So we don't have a finalized plan for this, but we are currently in meetings to find out more information. It looks like I added a couple letters in front of Gerard Energy. But we have reached out to them. We're gonna start the Phase 1 evaluation, and in eight weeks, they will get back to us, and they will have a plan for us about how many and what kind of chargers they recommend for our fleet based on how many miles we travel and the timeframes that we run each of our routes. And then Phase 2 is actually the like electrical plans that are finalized and drawn by their engineers to be able to hand to an architect for those plans to be constructed. And so we're about, you know, eight months for Phase 1, and then three months after that for Phase 2. Once we engage with Gerard Energy, they will provide a project manager that will be available for any questions. They'll be a consultant for like any type, any type of the process as we're going through electrification, and they'll be able to give us recommendations on electricians or contractors that are already currently doing the work and that are qualified through certain grants like the Make Ready Program, because they have to be certified for that money that is given out. And then I had two questions for the board that I put at the bottom. Would you be interested in an electric bus demo for a facility meeting like this? And it could be a quick 10-minute demo, and then also with the demo, we can include like maybe a 10 or 15-minute presentation from Bluebird, who's our bus manufacturer. So I wasn't sure what, how much time you guys have in a meeting like this. Would you like to maybe set a date and I could invite them?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I drive, but I'll see you.
You can ride. And then also, once we do that, maybe we can talk about, I know a lot of community members keep reaching out to me, and I'm sure Dan and other board members. Maybe we could do a proposed ride and drive for the community and possibly even set up a presentation for them that people that are interested could come and attend, and we could provide them a plan of what we are doing.
It'd be nice if that could be kind of piggybacked onto one of the community events that happens around green energy or energy savings, Tompkins Bike Walk, any of those places that has regular, at least once a year. Fairs or it'd be nice to have something at those.
I'm not aware of those events, so if you want to share them with Dan, we can definitely try to plan that.
That's a great idea, Jill. We can definitely.
You know the ones that there's always one I'm thinking of over here, and then, yeah.
I don't remember the, yeah, that's right. It's towards the end of the year. We can totally do that. It's a great idea. Thanks for suggesting that.
Very nice. Any questions for Liz or Dan?
I have a couple, I'm not sure Elizabeth was expecting. So we have been challenged by ICSD students to be much more aggressive in becoming, for lack of a better word, right, you know, carbon neutral, to be much more thinking about our, how we use buses, electricity, whatever. I had part of this conversation with Dan, and Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We purchase about 10 buses each year, give or take, somewhere around there, right? I mean, we have a fleet.
Two or six to eight?
Six to eight. But we're on a 10-year, for the most part, as I understand it, we're on a 10-year cycle, right, of replacing all of our buses. So that means even if we decided today to get all of our buses to be electric, it'd be 10 years before we'd actualize that. And so two buses makes sense. Actually, we need a pilot. But I know for our students, it's not going to seem that we are aggressively making this approach. So I think some sort of additional information that outlines what our plan is long-term, like yes, there's a pilot, we need to test some things out, infrastructure is a concern. We don't know how it's going to work in Ethica Winter, that part I give as well. But I think if we can map out what it could look like, or where we may be in five years would be helpful, I know for demonstrating our commitment and for our students, and probably just a good idea for us in general.
Yeah, so I think we definitely have a plan for the two pilot buses that is basically responsible for the district, right? But at the end of October, when we know how much money we're awarded, we have applied up to 25 buses for funding. So once we get that answer, and then we have this company come in and do the evaluation and give us the electrical plans for what they recommend, you know, depending on if we're gonna do 25 buses or electrify the whole fleet, we should be able to definitely make a more aggressive plan. And if we do do a ride and drive for the community, definitely a finalized plan with detail, something very concrete that we could share with the community should be in place before we do something like that.
So that's perfect. No, sorry.
I just want a clarification. So the grant for the 25 buses covers the entire cost?
That's for the.
And then we're in charge of the infrastructure?
So that's a federal grant, and it's money towards a bus?
Towards a bus.
Yeah, it does not.
Up to 25, right.
Up to 25 buses is a portion of the cost?
Yes, and it all depends on the application that you put in.
Correct, I just want a clarification.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I know we're not jumping 25 buses. That part I did.
Yeah.
I mean, the information that I had is it's up to $25,000 per bus from the EPA, but they may be increasing, they may also be increasing that money as well.
So what I would humbly ask is if we can get with our communication folks and create another sort of one-page that we've been creating or a website that provides additional information for community members about our plan moving forward with electric buses.
And Liz, I'll support you on that, and also want to let you know Lily and I have been working, and Heather's been attending, and Dan's been attending meetings with students who are actually doing a sustainability and climate summit on the 25th of October. And it will be in York Hall, and they're actually inviting 5th through 12th graders at each of the buildings. And so they asked at this initial meeting to have a district rep. I think it's Heather and myself are going to be on a panel. And so Liz, I will absolutely share the information from this slide in terms of e-buses. And then those are the students we meet regularly. And so we've actually enhanced communication to the students themselves since they came with their proposal about the Inethica City School District Green New Deal. And then they will be creating a committee that we will be a part of that will also hold us accountable, and they've been working directly with the communication folks to ensure that the messaging is actually appropriate for students too. So it's been really good work.
That's phenomenal. I'm looking forward to that. I'm also know that when I get emails from folks asking why we are taking such a long time, I'd like to be able to point them to something about here's the plan, right, that this is, you know, long-term consideration for how we're gonna proceed. So whatever that looks like would be very helpful.
If I could add just one more thing, because there was some notification that there'd be an increase in EPA rebate that was recent. I said there was a reimbursement up to $25,000 per bus, which may increase. But there was also a rebate of $13,000 per bus for infrastructure costs to build conduit and charging stations as well. So, and we're, I mean, frankly, we're hoping for an increase in these months. We'll find out soon how much of the funds we are getting in the next week or so.
Yeah, I look forward to talking to the engineers, and everything that I keep reading though is that the initial pumpwork cost is sort of taken care of within a couple of years, given the lower cost of running an electric bus. I'm not sure what that pulls from the grid. I'd be interested in what those data points are, but that's something I heard. And then I did see VW bus as a pilot. Does that mean it would lock us into a particular brand of bus? Or are there some universal?
It's actually a VW voucher, so the VW had a settlement, and so they are, this is one thing that they're paying out money for to help the school buses become green and more sustainable.
After I owned the VW diesel, that would have kept it.
It's not VW.
It's the false.
It's actually, yeah.
That's what they did with the diesel, of course.
So the Bluebird manufacturer, it's only available if the manufacturer applies for this grant for the district, and so they're applying for two of them for us, and those are the buses that we currently purchase for.
Interesting.
Yeah, just to tag on to one of the comments that you made, Sean, about the student expectation and the timeframes. And when we get into, you know, infrastructure and transformers, and Cindy can attest to very long lead times. So we could, when we get to a certain point, we can help advise you on sort of why it actually does take so long to implement some of these things, so students can understand there's a larger process and, you know, you are plowing forward, and there are other factors that, that, you know, just need to be, that you're not in control of.
Chris, I appreciate that, and at some point in time, when we want to get things done, we usually find a way to get things done. So yes, two-year lead time for a transformer, I understand that. And our students are saying, then why aren't we ordering it now? So we're, you know, those are the things that I'm trying to balance between. And so Liz, I always greatly appreciate, you know, the work that's being done. I know there are many moving parts to be able to communicate. And they had a pretty clear directive to us to be much more aggressive in the way in which we're supporting green energy.
Liz, I had a question in reference to any of those points that you had. Do any of the funds that you've applied for help you with the utility upgrades? Or is it just your own infrastructure on your facility?
So with the VW voucher program that I'm applying for by Friday, it qualifies us for the Joint Utilities New York Program or whatever. So that covers up to 90% of the utility upgrade from the line, I guess, to the building, and then also the infrastructure for the two charging stations. And then the two charging stations themselves, I believe, are not covered, but the slow chargers, which is what we're planning to put on, they're only about like $2,000 to $3,000. Compared to like the fast chargers, which are, could be like $35,000 to $70,000. So I think we can probably figure out in our budget where to come up with the $2,000 for two chargers.
Long-range planning for other locations or to beef up your service at a single location. As you mentioned, it's going to be hard to use these other chargers if they have to be partially available to the public and staff. After this VW grant, you know, what's the plan to get even more power? Because as you bring them on, you're gonna have to upgrade.
So that's what Gerard will be doing. So we've already had one company come in with a pilot that Dan and Amanda participated in with their results. They gave us just the like very draft form of what chargers they recommended, and Gerard is going to give us more detail. But basically, at the top of our bus yard, if you're familiar with our bus yard, they're gonna be running a direct line from the electric line, I'm not, electric, sorry, to like a set of transformers that will be at the top of our bus yard where it's gonna be all barricaded.
Between you and the county.
Yeah, and so from there, they're gonna be running the chargers down the bus lane. And so that's what they're explaining. If you don't want to be able to afford to do, say, five or six because you have to dig, then you have to repair. Um, if you you don't want to be able to afford to do, say, five or six because you have to dig and then you have to repair, so that's also what takes longer is you want to be able to do most of the work at once, so then you're not re-digging up things and re-repairing our beautiful parking lot that we just paved.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, so.
And Liz, I think that was the really good news about jumping into that initial grant in partnership with T S D Bosse's. Because that was not just school districts, it was municipalities and other, and NICE Ed was, right, I think they were part of that grant process to really analyze the grid itself and give information about what Tompkins County has available to support this movement of municipalities and districts in this in this direction. So it was important for us to be there, but more important was for NICE Ed to be there, right, to hear that.
Well, Trader Joe's has got it going on, so maybe we should go talk to him, so.
So.
And one other quick question, um, throughout the region and your conversation with other directors of transportation, how many, where are we, would you say, in the,
Yeah.
how many other folks are making this move or trying to make this move?
I would say we're definitely more on the leading edge of it, um, I just found three that are more upstate. Um, Bethlehem already has a couple and they've gone through this process, Camden has also gone through this process and Lake Shore. So I'll be reaching out to them to see like what was your process, what type of communications did you share, because I think people that have gone through the process really have some good
Absolutely.
um tips, but other than that, it's more been downstate that this has been happening, so we really are on the leading edge of having electric buses upstate.
Lake Shore is one of our clients, maybe I can get you some information if our if our team did any of that infrastructure work, I'll check with the team up there.
Thank you very much.
All set?
Thank you, Ruth. Um, do you want to pick a date that I can have the demo here and the bluebird here or you want to let me know?
Yeah, I think our chair should follow up with Amanda and see what a good day would be.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Oh, I I have a question, um, TCAT, our local bus company, now has a few electric buses, have we checked in with them, because especially there's been concerns about the hill, if we were able to manage the hill run and so forth, so since they've, they're already doing that.
So I've been on a call with them, I haven't personally worked like directly with just them, but I know Bosse's was working with them and other districts, I'm getting some information, but transit buses are built much differently than school buses, so although there is some similarities, it's uh school buses is a lot different than the transit world, so we can reach out to them for some questions, but they may not be facing the same things that we are.
I I would I would also add, the the company we're working with, Girardan Energy, is from um is from Canada. And in a lot of the districts they're working, the whole, the the entire districts have gone electric.
They've been mandated.
And, yeah, they've been mandated too, and they have similar winter conditions to us, of course.
Just like switch.
Uh, yeah, and and hilly conditions, so we we will um we will learn more from Girardan ener- energy and then we'll report back to this group, okay?
Yeah.
So that's a great question, Karen, thank you.
All good? All right. Cindy, you're up.
Okay. Um, so, good evening, everybody, the first facilities meeting, I've been back face to face in about three years, I think, so this is good. Um, starting with phase one, we're we're very close to getting uh all the work done, we're down to just a couple of things now. Um, the pool apron, if you've heard any discussion on that, we we did put in what was specified and the athletics department and coaches felt it was not uh aggressive enough around the pool apron for a slip concern. So Tetra Tech worked with the contractor and they found a a different product um that they'll put on that it has a more aggressive uh slip resistance uh to make it a little safer in there, currently what we have is some, uh, the district provided and installed some tape that has grip to it so that it's not slick uh as the kids are using the pool for athletics and phys ed. We're waiting for that um new material to be delivered and received by the contractor for installation, then we'll be getting that scheduled as soon as we know they have it. Takes about a day, usually uh they will have to do a little bit more prep than they've done in the past, uh because they were using the same product. This is same manufacturer, but a bit of a different product, so it requires a little bit more prep. Um, we've also been installing wall-mounted whiteboard material, if you go into area J and K at York, you'll see on the hallways, it looks like a metal piece of uh whiteboard on the walls, very thin. Um, and we're just waiting for the trim for that, that didn't all come together, so um, once we have that, that'll be complete. Uh, and really, those are the only pieces of quote-unquote work we have left to do. Any questions on phase one?
Cindy, I just want to, um, I talked to Samantha today, we are using the pool, as everybody knows, for internal um use, but um for request for outside groups, we're going to wait until that application is complete, just for liability purposes uh for outside groups, so um, we're supporting uh the athletic director's decision on that.
Good to know. Okay. Um, high school roof, um, the gross removal and replacement was completed before school came back and they've been working on the edge metal flashing. Uh, I think they're substantially complete with that now, except for upper area C where we have a couple of roof drains that are getting replaced and they're on the edge, so they need the roof drains in before they can complete that work. And we're awaiting receipt of those, that was a late change order, they were found to be in bad repair when we did the tear off, uh so they weren't originally part of the project. Um, that's why we didn't have them on hand. And skylights that were called to be installed throughout the um high school campuses in certain areas, they've been, for the most part, installed, I think there's one area, maybe it's H, that remains, um, they were trying to do it over the weekend, but weather um didn't allow that, they were busy doing the trim on the underside and they ran out of daylight, so unfortunately, fall is kind of in our daylights have been shortened, uh but they continue to work on those. And then uh once they have those in, um, and the metal flashing complete, they'll be getting their warranty inspection, um, so that will as long as that passes, uh we'll have thirty-year warranty on those areas that were completed this summer as well. So we're again very close on getting that work completed. Any questions on the high school roof? Middle school temperature control upgrades at DeWitt and Boynton, um, this work started in March and worked on throughout the the winter um to a point, and then this summer, we picked up the pieces that we needed to have the school unoccupied for, which required the systems to be drained, so if we did that in the winter, you'd have had no heat. Um, so that work's been completed, commissioning of the systems at both buildings um remains to be completed, they did a preliminary at one of the buildings, found some devices they provided were not functioning and those were replaced today, um, if they got to alternate them. Campus has also issued our own deficiency list, which is one of our contractual deliverables to the district of outstanding work before we notify Tetra Tech that things are ready for a substantial completion inspection. So we're, um, it was minor, it's really clean your stuff up for the most part, uh, so not a whole lot of outstanding work there, uh, we anticipate both the roof and middle school temperature control work to be completed in the next few weeks and then we'll be able to close out for those two kind, uh, two projects. Each had four contracts, um, so we'll be able to get those closed out and maybe we can start on those. Any question on the control upgrades? Phase two, Enfield, um, this summer, we did do, start the geothermal well field, as we reported in the past. They were completed before school reconvened and in September, the subcontractor completed the lateral pipe runs from the field to a point. Everything's been tested and backfilled, at this point, they don't um expect to do or plan to do any further work, they want to wait for all of the disruptive site to settle out over the winter, so they don't repair things and then have to go back in and repair them again. Uh, which is a good, they'll be back next summer anyway to complete their work, it's not a effort for them to come back. Um, and they'll clean everything up, topsoil and seed when they're done next summer. So summer twenty twenty-three work at Enfield under phase two that will be conducted, we'll be completing the geothermal well piping to the building um and connection to the equipment, we'll be removing the fuel oil tank, right now, it's scheduled for May fifteenth, um, that's typically the date SED says you can turn off your heat, uh, but we'll play that light year, pe- depending on the winter we have. And and the existing boilers, so the entire boiler room, all of the equipment, the fuel tank starts to get hogged out in May, uh, weather permitting. And then we'll be doing um the uh so some drainage that is part of getting tied in with the roof replacement up there, because we're going to have the hole open in front of the building. We incorporated that into phase two, um, and then we'll be rebuilding that space in front of the the school, um, getting all the equipment in there and getting uh the geothermal system up and running. The caveat to that, as we've talked in OACM, is the electrical transformer, part of the project is a service upgrade because your geothermal system requires more electrical um service than your current boiler system does, you're trading fuel oil for electric. Um, and what we're hearing right now for the transformer that we need up there, uh, it was a year out when we were planning this, uh, from the time NICE Ed ordered it, they were looking at about fifty-two weeks for delivery. Since we bid and awarded phase two, it's gone from fifty-two weeks to three years, potentially. So uh our plan um discussing with OACM is that about March or April, we'll check in with uh NICE Ed, we'll determine where they are with delivery of that transformer and we'll regroup if need be with a updated plan. We've got several options we've been discussing, none of which are good.
Loud, they're all loud.
Loud and.
Really, really loud.
And like external, yeah, not good choices.
Loud.
Um, but we need the electric to run the new equipment, unfortunately, and if we can't do the service, then your new equipment won't run. Um, so more to follow on that, we're we're monitoring that closely uh for delivery of that equipment.
So Cindy, so it can't be run at a a lower level, it just, it it just can't go until the transformers are placed?
No, it's. Tetra Tech is reviewing this at at our request and basically you have enough power with your current service to either run the building or run your heat. So if you run the geothermal, you don't have lights and electric, if you run your lights and electric, you can't run the geothermal, there's just not enough electricity. So this is a I think that this is where we get our communications team involved early on, because this is clearly one of those out of our control moments. Um, and we have planned, we thought, right, we were well in advance for planning for this. And then we get delivered the news going from one year to three years and that is atrocious to hear, right, and so we will be forced if this is not available, and I want to go back to the the options, right? So the options are external to the building generators, right?
Or you just don't take your boilers out for another year.
Or or we live on the old boilers with the duct tape and I'm just trying to bring the light up, right, I I mean, and you you wish and you hope and, right?
Right.
Um, and and we're not getting to the efficiency that we'd want to. And we had even last year in in concern of pushing it a year, um, looked at what temporary heaters would be for the building up there and that is an option, but not
That is another option.
a palatable one because of the noise and the fuel that you're going to spend for it, the fuel you're going to spend for your generator. Um, you would, I would say my first option to advise you would be to keep the boilers and and hope they make it because it's it's no change to what you're doing currently. Um, but have those backup options available should those boilers fail, I know that the maintenance department has done a great deal of work on those from the time we started here to where they only had a few of them functioning and they've gotten all but I think one now functioning. Um, still not a great condition.
How many years would that be, how many years again, for that?
How many?
How many years would we need to keep a boiler in place?
We would hope for just another year, Dr. Brown.
One year, yeah.
Um, when we first started planning phase two, we did have the service scheduled for twenty twenty-two. And when we had heard that it was going to be such a delay for the transformer, we immediately pushed it before we bid to twenty twenty-three, because it really didn't hurt us for any other work that we needed up there this year, it's really in conjunction with the new geothermal equipment that it's required.
I think the um, not a concern, but it'd be helpful, right, the communication part would be helpful. Um, but also wonder if we should meet with the um faculty and staff to outline these, like, here's where we are, here are the options that are right, but to give people the heads up, so um, I think sometimes I feel like people don't, for a variety of reasons, people don't hear until after the decision is made and it's
Sure.
maybe helpful to engage folks sooner rather than later.
Yeah, so we did, we did a community outreach event to Enfield, which was reported, but not getting into this level of detail and so I love that idea of like the next phase, right?
Yeah.
Um, and again, it's it's like running that, it's sort of, it's like that delicate balance of like, this is not the time to panic.
Right.
And there's realities of this being possibility.
Yeah.
Let me make sure, that's because I work in soundbite world, alright, so we have a year delay in the project, basically, with hopes that our
Best case scenario.
Yeah, best case scenario, a year, worst case, a two-year delay, three-year delay.
Best case.
But as far as the look and feel for the folks in the building, it won't be much different because it's going to be heated either way.
If the boilers, the current boilers that I would, again, if you have a head of concern.
Yeah, but if boilers were to go bad now, we would figure out a way to heat the buildings.
Right, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have a portable heater, we would get like all of that, it would be loud and it wouldn't be, it would like cause discomfort, right?
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to see.
Yeah. I mean, we're we're talking about a thirty-year processed product that we're looking to change the scope of work in this way in the community or region.
Yes. Uh-huh.
This, from my perspective, the one and two-year delay, I hear, yeah, I communicate, but
Right.
I wouldn't want, we could, there's some trigger words and sentences in here that could get the people fired up, that's all I'm saying, like, I got fired up.
That's a really good point.
Hold on, but
That's a really good point.
At the end of the day, you, the the boiler's going to be heated, but it's still our geothermal, it may be at keeping troubles on the property for next year, which is what I roll into back in two thousand and eleven.
Yes.
Yeah. Of course.
Yeah.
We we were able to bring a few more boilers online, correct?
Yeah.
And there's one left that needs, okay, so maybe we can look at that, okay, so we can look at that last.
That's a few months ago, yeah. Yeah, so they may have.
They may, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, pre-Heather, um, we had been working on uh heating at Enfield, and I think we brought three more, maybe two more online to support.
I think there's a total of eight, if I got my numbers right, and they've got seven, last winter, they had seven of them functioning.
Right. Okay, okay.
So it's not, you know, it's not done yet.
Yes, you did. We can also look at that last, we can also look at that last one.
What it would take.
I agree about choosing words very carefully, but I also know that some of the classrooms have been studying this, right, it's it's become part of the curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
And so then to, at the la- not the last minute, but be like, oh, by the way, it's going to take us two more years
Right.
when we've been been talking about it for a little longer, so I and I don't, you know, for me, it's not less about how we share the information. But I know if I'm a teacher in that building and I hear about it two days before the start of school, I think I would prefer just to have known, sure.
Yeah. Cindy, does NICE Ed accept letters from children? Um, just like in the letter already.
Facts, facts, like, or research, right?
Curious about that.
Uh.
I just, I just don't know.
But they're, I understand that that could be applicable here too, because the delays, the supply chain, like all the other issues, the different systems, that could be a part of the lesson too.
Can you connect?
That's right. Mm-hmm.
It's right.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
There are a skip one.
Yeah.
It's a teaching moment, sure, what can happen
Yeah.
out there, out of your control and other SEDs.
Learning issues.
And what do you do when you're presented with an issue like this and how do you react uh and not panic, right, as part of the
Right, well, so.
Yeah.
the message as well. Um, other work that's going to happen up at uh Enfield, hopefully next summer, um, depending upon SED approvals, but outside of phase two, there'll be phase three A one, which is roof replacement and three A two, which is facade uh work at the cafeteria, uh, the student canopy uh replacement and a new canopy put in at the visitor's store as well as a couple of uh the toilet rooms down the hallway from the library and that wing will be renovated. Um, that work, uh, the roof, we have SED approval for, uh, Tetra Tech and I are working on getting the documents tightened up and out to two roofer's for um proposals, we're not going to publicly bid this, we're going to go on what we call a tips program, our state contract program. We hope that helps us expedite material ordering and delivery. As we've experienced delays on the high school roof project with those things, we're we're trying to see what we can do to make that better. Um, and then three A two is the other work up there, that went into SED in August, uh, Tetra Tech has had no word on that. Um, from the experience of phase two, if we get SED approval back in March, like we did, or late February, like we did on phase two, uh, we'll want to look at it very closely as to what we try to bid and do as a schedule. It's not to say no work in that phase would happen next summer, um, but some of those materials, again, are very long lead. The the facade panels can be twenty-two to forty weeks, depending upon the material. And there's no way we would have that for summer. The other piece of that phase is at BJM and window replacement. Anything with aluminum blazing right now are six months and longer. So we're against that as well with the windows. But we have conversation, have had conversations with both principals. And they're open to allowing work to occur during the school year on off hours, like in the evenings, to be able to facilitate that work and not wait those winter months with no work occurring.
I just wanna make sure we add cafeteria to one of your trigger words. The fact that we still have cafeteriums says a lot about the thing. Trying to be real, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
All right, so at LACS, we did have the toilet room renovations, not complete, but substantially complete and turned over for use. We saw those on our walkthrough last week. We have ceilings, which we're trying to do on the upcoming staff day. At least get the drywall up. I think that's next Friday or this Friday. We have a Friday, a Friday coming up. We're gonna try to get that up. Lights are still out. They haven't been delivered. Permanent fire alarms, devices are, again, a long lead item. I get tired of saying it. I know you get tired of hearing it. But it's just the reality of those systems. And, and doors. We don't expect them until late December or even into the first of the year. But they do have temporary self-issue files, so they do have privacy. They are functioning. Dev Tech is very happy with what we've got done up there with the toilet rooms. And the work at the front entrance continues. Foundations are complete for the addition. They had a schedule to pour the slab today. And then, one day next week, I think they're pouring the sidewalk outside of that. We don't have the steel for that. So we'll be moving over to the new vestibule for the Black Box Theater on the south side of the building and doing foundations there, which allows Dev to continue her use of the Black Box Theater as a classroom space with two means of address. We're gonna keep one of those exterior doors available for her at all times, regardless of what work we have going on. And the outdoor spaces, as you saw last week, think are a huge improvement up there. They are beautiful and gorgeous. It's such a park-like situation up there now. But those, that work up there has been overheated by the wet weather we've been having, unfortunately. But they've made great progress since school went back into session up there. And they're, they're close to being complete if the rain just holds off a little bit. They did get the basketball court surfaced, as we saw last week as well. So, that should be finishing up before winter, which is great. Any questions at LACS? DeWitt. We did turn over the toilet rooms near the entrance and offices, or what we call the D area, the larger multi-use toilet rooms that we saw last week. Those were turned over at the end of September. And the temporary toilet trailers were demobilized end of September, early October, depending upon pickup day. So those are no longer in use at DeWitt. Again, we're, we're missing permanent lighting and heating equipment and fire alarm devices in those spaces. We anticipate they'll, they'll come in about the same time the LACS equipment will. The toilet rooms that remain, the F area toilet rooms by the serving line, they are scheduled to be turned over to the district for use at the end of this week with the same temporary situation as we have in the larger toilet rooms at the other end of the building. Auditorium work is continuing. We saw last week, the duct work and the soffit installations are going on in there. Work is scheduled to continue throughout the school year with the completion of March of twenty twenty-three. The new outdoor area, it was paved last week. Weather is approaching to a point with temperatures where we may not be able to get it surfaced this fall. But the contractor is on board with doing that in the spring, similar to how we had to do the stadium track. We just have temperature requirements that will, will limit that work being done this fall.
Because Cindy, it's still usable.
Yes.
So we can, like, just like we do with the track, right? You can use it, it's just not finished. So we just will then clear that off, blow that off, get that ready, prepped, and then the surface will be full.
The only thing we ask is that we don't drag picnic tables across.
That's right, that's right.
Foot trap pick is fine.
Foot trap pick is great, okay, that's great. We're sure we can do that.
And the walkway upgrades around that patio are continuing. They have one stairwell and a piece of sidewalk still to pour. Again, weather has impacted that work as well up there. They're working diligently on getting that done. Summer twenty twenty-three at DeWitt will include the main entrance upgrades. We're taking out the existing doors and glass and replacing it with new, as well as creating a secure vestibule with a greeter office inside. And exterior canopies will be attached to the building at the entrance, as well as the front of the building. So students have a place to wait out of the weather. Any questions on DeWitt? South Hill, new foundation work at the entrance is ongoing, slowly, but ongoing. And we've, as you saw, we have the interior existing spaces framed up. The electrician and the mechanical contractor have been up there wrapping in those walls. So we hope here in the short term, we'll be able to start putting board on those walls and, and building out those spaces. The north parking lot, as you saw, had been repaved. That's binder on there. Next summer, when we do the south parking lot, we'll be getting, we'll be getting top coat across both paved areas so that it's clean, there's no joint. And it'll be a fresh look when it's all done, end of next summer. And then we'll also be renovating the current main office nurses area into a multipurpose space classroom next summer.
Cindy, to add, there's also, while this is all happening, the furniture folks have been coming in and meeting with people, right? To ensure that, I think we decided that we're gonna have the same sort of seating that we had in your hall in the auditorium, I'm sorry, in the performance area space, or LGI, right, Large Group Construction Room at DeWitt, so it's movable.
With LGI?
LGI. Large Group Construction Room. Oh, it's like, it's Large Group Construction Room, right? And then, the, all the casework and the built-ins and the furniture, we reviewed that at South Hill. And then I think we're also, I think Michael was gonna meet also with folks at DeWitt as well for a couple of things. So we were well on our way to make sure that all the interiors are gonna be. So we didn't have to wait, because if you remember, the Welcome Center, there was a little bit of a delay. And so we timed that up a little bit better this time. Because again, we have no idea if it's custom or if there's long leads. So that, we've been able to review the plans with the folks, like, one more time. And I did wanna just say thank you to campus construction team and all the folks that showed up for the walkthroughs. I thought that was really informative and able, then you were able to sort of see these projects now when Cindy gives these overviews, right? And just like, oh, right, that's that part, oh, right, that's what the bathroom means, right? When we say it's, we're using it, but, right? So, so thank you to campus for taking the time. Each of the field managers meeting us at each of the spots, just, you know, giving us those overviews was really great.
Not a problem. Anyone have any questions on capital project as a whole? I was getting my update. Well, that tagged out, though.
It was perfect. So she'll attach to four point three as a master budget summary. And so that's actually where we would line up with finance committee. But I do, I did wanna say there is one extra agenda item about the dates for the February meetings due to the February break. And so we can, you know, we can do that separately as a facilities committee, or we can work with finance to pick the one day that we're gonna do that. I think they were eliminated from the schedule because of the February break. Facilities, I, no offense, I'm not that worried about in terms of meeting finance, Chris, I am. Because that is budget.
Pardon?
And so, you know, missing a finance meeting in February feels not good to me. And I think probably also to Dr. Brown. So, we would like that opportunity to at least talk finance and also facilities if possible.
So do you wanna propose a?
Tricia, were there dates that you, that you, that you had looked at with Emily? Or were you gonna put that up to the committee?
I was gonna put it up to the committee of the week. February twentieth is when the break is, the week of February twentieth and the twenty-fourth. So it could be on a Thursday?
The sixteenth you're talking about?
The week prior on that Thursday, right, sixteen.
How about that, Joe? The sixteenth of February. Chris? Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Are you talking about doing both of it?
We, we.
Finance as well, with both of that Thursday?
I was thinking it, it would be great, because then we just have that one committee for the board members to stay. And usually during budget season, we, I mean, Chris, we usually get popular.
Yeah.
You know?
That would just be finance committee.
We would have facilities too. I think maybe an update, right? We might actually, during that time, the reason why it is good, as we would probably know from SED, potentially, potentially.
Figure's rough.
Right? And maybe talking about bidding and all those good, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be hopeful. Yeah. Great, thank you, Joe, for that. I appreciate it.
Agenda setting for next meeting, do we have anything on our plate that we're aware of at this point, or?
So, one of the things that I, and I really stepped up, but I would love to sort of check in with the students from this, the Climate and Sustainability Group, is perhaps if those two reps wanted to come and give an overview of how that summit went and sort of what they're, they're thinking is now that, I mean, we're learning together, right? Like, and it's really been fantastic to, to talk to them about sort of like what we can do, how quickly we can do it. And so I, I think that would be a great time, if that's possible, to invite them.
Okay.
Okay, I will, I will send that out to Zara and Sophia.
And other than that, we'll just have our usual updates?
Yes.
And maybe, maybe, maybe GIAC will have been moving forward by then, in the easement, so.
Chris would, I think, love to give an overview of the progress with the STEM design.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so let's plan on that as well.
That would be great as well. So that'll be phase three.
V, three V one, three V one. And I can give you a quick update. We've been meeting with the stakeholders, both from the science department and the tech department, pretty regularly on the layout of that and what they need for it to function properly for them. So they're in the last, Tetra Tech is in the last bits of DD or design development phase of their design. Chris and I just talked this afternoon. He's anticipating getting those documents to campus for an updated estimate November tenth. So we may not have the number by then, because it'll take a bit to get that done before we have it for the facilities or OACM. But, design is moving forward. And I believe their anticipation at Tetra Tech is to issue that to SED, that phase to SED sometime in the spring. With a, the plan would be to vote that in the, or bid that in the fall of twenty twenty-three for summer twenty twenty-four start.
Very good. Well, let's move on to finance. So this will close the facilities meeting at this point.
Karen, I just make one request, that in the frequently asked questions, that we update something about delays. The reason why, why delays.
Sure. I will work with the communications team. And Cindy, you've worked with them directly as well. So I think that's a great point, Karen, we can then just do that.
Just generalize it, that's specific to the delay, delay for this area now.
Yeah.
All right, hearing no objections? Facilities is closed and.